Do you be able to move this over?
Yeah.
Saved by the owl.
Saved by the owl.
He's like, oh, they're color coordinated, look at that.
Yep.
Yeah, you were.
Yeah.
Andrew needs to sit over there. Just kidding.
We got like this yellow.
We got color.
Oh, I see, yes.
Good morning.
Hello. I think we're good.
Yep.
Good morning, welcome to Detroit Community Land Bank Monthly Board of Directors meeting. Today is September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. We will start with a call to order. Bob Conley.
Here.
Camaro Di Martino.
Here.
Suzanne Spelling.
Here.
Andrew Cooper.
Here.
Kim Astrid Pearson.
Here.
Monica Kuziasky.
Here.
James Mager.
Here.
Uh, missing Brian Santo, Brian Barker, Seamus Donnelly.
Yeah.
Also in attendance is our project manager, Paul Donnelly, executive director, Brad Lewis, and our counsel.
As well as we have the.
We have Master.
And our friendly Reverend.
Brian Barker is working.
Brian Barker is now in attendance.
You got a packet for him.
Sure.
I'll start a review of our meeting minutes from August twentieth.
I'm making motion to approve the notes. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? The motion passes. Uh, that brings us into our, excuse me, financial report. Brad, you want to take that over?
Yes, sir. All right, um. So, that's going to be the report that Jessica put together, the management report. I'm on page three to start, that's what P and L. Uh, some over, you know, pop lens stuff. We're at about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue, about four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. It cost if it sold, and I'll just remind everybody, that's the writing off of the buildings we sell, which leaves us with a gross profit of four thirty-four. Um, I did send out two of these packets. One of them had property maintenance at twenty-nine thousand because it was miscategorized from capital improvements that were done to buildings. And so I, I had Jessica fix that and we're at fifteen-three for the year for property maintenance. I added in line five, four, one, five, zero. That's a subrecipient grant, facade award twenty-twenty-five line item, so that way we can track the total expenditures there separate. Uh, right now, we've only paid for one this month. We've already paid for a second one that was complete, and I assume two or three more will be complete this next month. And, um, we'll get into that when we talk to the facade, but you'll see those numbers increase. Uh. Largely, everything else there is pretty good down to, down that page. I, I mean, of course, I'll answer any questions afterwards. And then, um.
What's our interest expense?
I think we had the interest expense for the first four months, and that was for seven ninety-one River Street.
Okay, okay, yep, thank you.
Uh, in finance, we talked postage, so I should say that we're at two hundred and eighty-five dollars this year. You know.
Wow.
I know.
Great job.
It was, Monica was joking with me that I put a thousand dollars in the budget, and I don't think we'll need a thousand dollars, but Jessica figured I'd mention it. Um. Funny stuff. Yeah, and then, you know, I, I like to mention that the interest income that we've gotten from our money market this month is almost seven hundred dollars, so that's good. The end of this, so far this year, we're at a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, net gain or surplus in, in the organization from the work that we've done. Uh, moving on to the balance, well, first, if anybody has a question for the income statement, I can answer it. So moving on to the balance sheet, we have the, um, the bank accounts. We have about just under three hundred thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, we do have this account receivable for sixty thousand, and that was funded, so we actually had, I've seen that sixty become, you know, received, so we're a little higher than three hundred thousand in the bank right now. Um, of course, you know, we have a couple prepaid insurance, and we have an eight thousand dollar training that we paid for like two or three years ago. That's what that prepaid expenses, we have a training from, um, an organization that sort of administers a land bank association that we could do at any time, but we paid them that eight thousand dollars to do that training. That was maybe two or two and a half years ago that we paid for that training, so. And that's something we could definitely talk about. We have prepaid insurance for our big expense at the beginning of the year. And then we have basically the capitalization of the values of our properties, which takes up like the next whole page. And then you get to the end where we have some computers and depreciation on the computers, leaving us in a net on a net equity position of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Of course, then we get to our liabilities, and, um, we don't have a lot of liabilities. We just have the deposits from sold properties that people, you know, were under contract for, and some accounts payables that are reflected in our accounts payable. Um, line item. Yeah, that's the majority of those. Then, of course, credit card bill, which was paid, and so our total position is about still nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for that. Of course, the count receivable, we've received that award for the sixty thousand dollars. That was the, the final draw on the last payment there. Accounts payable, those checks have been cut in cash, but we had to recognize that they were owed at the, before the end of August, they were cut after that period. Then, of course, you have the statement of cash flows, which just shows us, you know, where our ins and outs are. And, um, and then, of course, the reconciliation reports that I give you guys every month, so you can see every transaction that comes in and out of the land bank.
Any questions? We move into the executive director's report. Um, LBI Phase Two.
Yeah, so, Ken, you're new to this, so we have a grant called LBI Land Bank Initiative. The Phase Two is a capital grant, Phase One was an operating grant. The Phase One grant sort of funded our overhead stuff, not capital expenditures. Uh, the LBI Phase Two is a one point six, seven million dollar award that we've spent some of it, and so every month, we sort of go over what we're doing. And the two things to wrap up the LBI Two award is the facade program, and we're fixing three buildings, eight thirty-four River Street, eight seventy-one River Street, and three-three-four-zero Sixth Avenue. So, uh, the facade program, um, you'll see we have two sheets that relate to it, and one with some yellows and one filled out with all the names of the potential contractors to do the work. The facade program is a mini-grant that we're extending to owner-occupied people, low-income in the north central neighborhood. It was over a year and a half ago, we inherited this program. So we did get six new, um, responses to bids. I'll let Paul talk a lot about that, and then we also, I plugged into potential awards into the, um, in the chart for what our total amount for the facade program would be, and that was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, so we actually had a savings of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, which we can apply to our projects, namely eight seventy-one River Street, which we'll get into more of what we can do with that later. So, Paul, let you take over the facade bids.
Sure. Uh, the page you see in front of you with the highlights on it are the remaining six, uh, projects, uh, for, uh, the facade program. Uh, highlighted are the lowest bidders, uh, responsible bidders. Uh, so our plan is to award these, uh, within the next week or shortly after this meeting, so that, uh, work can begin on these remaining projects. Uh, there are other projects that are in, uh, progress right now, uh, and a couple that haven't been started yet. Contractors are just lining up their things and getting their stuff together. So actively, uh, we're managing all of these at, uh, one time. So we're, we're hoping that we can get them done before December first, uh, obviously for our grant, and especially for the weather.
So I have any total, twelve?
Should be thirteen.
Thirteen.
There's thirteen, totally.
Do you want to talk about Delta real quick, the reason, I put a question mark there because we just didn't verify with them. I, I think Northeast Urban Construction, we have all their documents.
Sure.
They're, they're in good standing with us.
Delta is a contractor that has, uh, showed up to almost every walkthrough we've done for LBI Two projects, uh, has sometimes bid, sometimes not, uh, and bid these three projects, uh, four projects. Um, his bids, like, a lot of other people here came in on the later side because we were able to put those together just in time for the board meeting, so we needed that, uh, time on New York State Contract Reporter, uh, so that, uh, it's per our funding that we have to have it up there, as Monica knows. You know, it's got to be up there for at least two weeks, not including holidays and weekends. So that's why the deadline for this was yesterday, eight AM. We're still painting insurance from people. We have received this contractor's liability insurance. We're waiting for his workers' comp. He assured me just as of last evening that we'll have that comp certificate today.
This is for Delta contract?
This is for Delta, yes.
Yes. Just to clarify, you, you put the bids up on the New York State Contract Reporter, but we're not required by LBI Funding to use that mechanism, but we use it because it increases the bidder pool.
Eh, sure.
But the, um, New York State Contract Reporter requires a certain number of days on the site, which as soon as you upload it, it starts the clock, and these bids were due like you said yesterday morning, which is why some of them came a little later, or this sheet came last night, you know?
Yeah, we worked on this, uh, Brad and I, last evening, just to make sure that we had all the numbers that we have in-house, uh, to provide for the board, uh, to make sure that you guys know exactly what's going on with.
So the only reason you're saying a question mark is just because of the workers' comp?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all, we, we just.
It was to remind us to tell you that we're going to double check.
And triple check.
Yeah. We've already had a couple of those situations, so we just want to make sure that, you know, before we say we've awarded all of them and they're all set, we just want to make sure that.
Do we have, um, scheduled laws in the news recently? Do we have, uh, indemnification language in all of our contracts with our contractors?
We can, I don't know if we really reviewed indemnification agreement yet, but.
Yeah, Katie gave us the agreement, and it does have an indemnification clause.
Okay, okay.
We also make them list us. Cities requires them to list the city as additionally insured too, so.
And we do as well, yeah. So we, we, we become a certificate holder.
Right.
As does the city.
Well, it's, it's, yes, but there's also the indemnification.
And that is in our contract with the vendor, and it's also spelled out in the RFP.
Okay.
Where's Delta coming out of?
Uh, they are out of.
Auburn is where.
Auburn.
Initially, I looked them up on Google Maps, and it looked like a cemetery, and I said, oh, no. But the address says across the street.
I almost passed out when you said that, I'm like, you gotta be kidding me, you know?
Probably undead or cheap.
No, no, I don't think so, but, you know, obviously we want to make sure. So I, you know, we got the bid yesterday, and so we're just, we're getting the clarifications.
I'm kidding, no, don't even get down that hole.
I don't think so, I don't think so, but. So, um, I'll talk a little bit about eight thirty-four and three-three-four-zero. So, eight thirty-four River Street, I don't know, you guys saw the pictures, what the facade on the windows are in. Um, they're, they're just rocking and rolling, they're doing a great job.
And you know what, they're steady, and they're meticulous about what they're doing. I was there the other day for a water test, and, you know, all hands were on deck. And I love to see that with the G C taking full control.
Who is that?
Bolton Construction.
Okay.
Bolton Construction, yeah, and, um, we're very pleased with the, the work at, uh, eight thirty-four.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they're, they're getting ready to put the boilers in. Now, again, with these pro, these properties, three properties, my goal is to say was the, what's the minimum, you know, but also livable and dignifying way to fix them up, and let's not tear it apart. So they're repl, they replaced the, um, radiator lines that were split, but they kept them intact, so they're putting in new boilers for each unit.
The hot water base.
Yeah, baseboard, yeah, the baseboard radiator, some of them had froze, but they tested all those, they, they replaced pipes as needed. They didn't just gut everything, they kept all the sheet rock, because we removed the drop ceiling. That was, I mean, just to say like, it made it an eight-foot room, but the windows went up to nine foot, so by having the drop ceiling, you cut off the top part of it. So we raised it to the ceilings above the windows and allowed them to, you know, keep all the electrical wires that were there. All the, all the electric was largely intact and working, so you could go and flip the switch and look around, but, you know, at the same time, we didn't want to get into like a six hundred thousand dollar RFP response by saying we're going to tear it all apart and remove everything, so.
Didn't need it.
Right, yeah.
Like the, the circuit breakers and everything is up to code, like the boxes and everything, so we don't worry about that.
Yeah, there's G F Is in the kitchens already and that sort of stuff, sure.
And, and there, there's some, uh, electrical that's being replaced and upgraded, et cetera, like, uh, for adding a laundry room, uh, that we've done on, on these floors. So those things are going to take place, but we're trying to do it without terrorizing all the plaster walls and what's remaining, and try to actually restore things.
And this is actually a sheetrock building, this one.
This one is right, sheetrock, but we have, the other one is thirty-three forty.
I don't know, that, Bestum might have been the company, so they used to have people occupying it, you know, in, in transition of their lives, and, and so this was abitable, but it just wasn't independent units. It was people maybe using rooms on floors. So the modifications are going really well, and they're doing a great job.
Okay.
We, um, awarded three-three-four-zero-sixth Avenue to Bolton after last month, and they've taken site control and they, they moved along. I haven't quite been there as much as Paul, so Paul, you can probably speak to that one.
Sure, um, they're, they're ready to go with the majority of the work. Uh, the building had to be cleaned out, uh, after the former contractor left. Uh, there was quite a mess there, so we assisted in getting that cleaned up, uh, for the contractor. And at this point, they're doing pretty much on a, on a more limited basis, but they're, they're rewiring, and there, there's going to be new plumbing added. Um, we're saving plaster, we're saving, uh, all of the trim and molding work. Uh, unfortunately, one, uh, window opening did get damaged, uh, to a point where we're going to have to restore it, uh, which is costly, uh, but the remaining items that are historical of nature and original to the building will be kept intact.
Great.
So.
Mantles?
Um, there is one mantle in there.
You're asking if we're going to keep it?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah, we're some. And then eight seventy-one River Street, we, um, sort of, Paul and I sort of took over G C that, because we didn't have a backup bid for that. And, uh, things have been moving right along, we're, we're pretty much framed out, and the rough-in plumber's starting this week, and.
Rough-in plumbing should start tomorrow at the latest on Friday. Rough-in electrical as, is at about sixty-five percent as we speak. We also have a brand-new furnace in the basement, uh, that will heat the office, and, uh, we're still looking at a couple of different things for split systems, uh, for the first floor apartment, as well as the second floor apartment. Um, we're getting quotes, uh, for insulation, as you'll see in one of these.
I don't think you'll see it today, but it has.
You won't see it today, but insulation, sheet rock, uh, you'll see some things here for, uh, for siding. Uh, those bids are still coming in, so, and siding is going to be a topic of conversation, I believe, in our meeting today. But, uh, it's moving along, and it's on schedule to be complete, uh, so long as we don't have any major league hiccups, uh, for December one. That's where we are right now. Regarding budget, uh, here, it looks like if you go through the eight seventy-one River Street, uh, project budget.
It was like this.
This page?
Probably the last.
Last page, yes. So you can go line by line if, if you like, um, you know, U C A was contracted, as you can see, with all the different line item numbers, uh, that they submitted in their proposal, and we're cross-tabbing those numbers with our expectations and/or our actual cost. So just for the rough-in framing and carpentry, you know, uh, we've spent ninety-one thousand dollars. There's probably a few thousand dollars left to finish it up, and we're projecting it to come in at ninety-four-five. You can see the difference in, uh, savings, you know, to the tune of, uh, about eighteen thousand dollars. Um, uh, finished carpentry has not even been quoted yet, obviously, we're not near that milestone. Uh, plumbing, uh, for our rough-in and finish, you can see our number compared to U C A's number that they projected is substantially lower, at thirty-one thousand, U C A versus, uh, us chasing the project at eighteen thousand, two thirty. You can, I'm not going to go down every single item of, of the list, but at the end of the day, our expectation is that we're going to come in twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars less than with the G C that we had in place. So.
But we still have a, we're still over the LBI budget, but we can utilize our own funds to make up the difference.
Right, yes.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, uh, just, that's largely to shape the narrative on our siding conversation that we'll have later.
Right.
So these.
We put fifty thousand in there for siding, for the hardy board, and of course, we'll talk about that.
So the center, the, where the fifty grand is, is that the five fifty-three?
Yes, yep, that's a new allocation, right, yep.
Mm-hmm.
So that project, that five fifty-three includes, like, the full build, like, the, is it full-building hardy board?
We.
No, your fifty grand.
Yeah, I, I assume.
With fifty thousand dollars, yes, that, that, that's what brought the project over the available LBI Two budget.
But it's the full building, not just.
Yes, the full building, of course, and it's, again, that's a projected number, so, you know, and that's open to discussion. Obviously, there's a lot of feelings on what we should do for the exterior of the building.
Yeah.
And Brad and I are just here to, uh, let you know what we have and what we don't have, and, and ask for where the board would like to go on the subject.
My question on that, and then we'll move on. We are going to talk about that siding, just for, so I can.
Wrap your head around.
Bag this. That twenty-three thousand of savings from Univise, right? That's what we saved thus far.
Yeah. Um, when you say, yeah, thus far, so like, if the flooring comes in ten thousand less, you know, or twenty thousand less?
Could be.
We can save more.
It could be more.
Could be more.
So that we're going to, let, let's everybody wrap their heads around that savings of twenty-three thousand.
So far.
And keep that in your head for when we talk about siding.
I mean, and honestly, that savings could be over fifty thousand.
That's what I'm getting, that's what I get, that's what I get.
If we did the siding at double four, um, siding and repair.
Yeah.
Our actual savings, I'm just saying this not because I prefer one or the other, but because I want to mention how, eh, you know, efficient it is having us line up these contractors. Uh, we're, we're, we're probably saving another, like, a total fifty thousand, like, seventeen-five to fifty is actually like thirty, thirty-two-five, thirty-two-five plus the twenty-five is like sixty thousand dollars so far, saving. And it's largely the plumbing line item, when the HVAC's over, but every other, uh, item is lower except the masonry, because there was a, a surprise there, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that number and point it out for everybody to keep in their heads for siding.
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll move on to the two resolutions we have today. The first resolution we have is an A and D committee recommendation to dispose of seven eighty-five River Street. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to dispose of seven eighty-five River Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, so I sent you guys the letter that the, there was two bidders on this, and the A and D committee made a recommendation, recommendation on one of them. The person who was not chosen sent a letter, and I sent that letter out in the board packet, I just want to confront that. I also sent the narrative, they, they had described some work they've been doing in Troy. I reached out to Code to ask what's the building permit status on the vacant buildings they're mentioning. There was no permit application supplied yet on the second-place bidder's property. And so I just wanted to be clear to share with the board that that person did reach out feeling like the bid number was too low, so then I also provided you guys with additional financing from the initial person, the person the A and D committee recommended, and I'm available for any questions on any of that, if anybody has them.
I was pretty confident with.
This is an, this is investment property?
Yeah.
For both, for both?
Everybody loves.
Yep, both of them were investment properties, and, um, one person, the person that the A and D committee chose had done an Albany County Land Bank building, and they had before and afters.
That's.
Yep.
Of it, and they, they have a construction firm, and it looks like they, all three of them have, all three of the, the prince of people that want to buy it also, um, have jobs that make a decent amount of money, so they can weather, um, higher expense, I guess.
I, I'll go on the record as saying, I, I decided to go with the, 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 the person we, we recommended because of their experience with the Albany Land Bank, and because of what we were, just went through with two of our other properties. And that is all, remember, seven ninety-one, eight seventy-one, seven eighty-five, these are all along the lines. I did not want to go back to the same narrative we had for seven ninety-one, so I decided to recommend to the committee that we, that we play this a little safer and go with someone who has experience dealing with Albany, Albany Land Bank contracts, which are pretty consistent with ours. So that was why, th- there was no other glaring difference other than this was, I thought this was the safer and more effective route to go. I did appreciate that Caroline's letter stating that she would like to continue to see if there's opportunities, so I don't think that a relationship was, was really tarnished or separated, because she's willing to come back to the table, so I think that's good, um, and if we could reach back out to her in some capacity to let her know, you know, this was our decision.
Yeah, before there was a vote, I just want to mention, uh, that this, this property was slated for demolition, and now we're selling it for thirty-six thousand dollars after putting in about thirty-six thousand dollars. So we've created an opportunity for somebody to create three units of housing, or something that otherwise would be a vacant lot and an additional parking lot, maybe for the person next door.
Um, so there's no other discussion?
Community guard.
Uh, no, please, no. Uh, all in favor?
In accord, pocket park.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? I'll pause and.
Solutions from a decade ago, which were very good.
That motion passed.
Uh, that'll bring us to our next resolution, to dispose of an A and D committee recommendation of three zero, or sorry, three-two-zero-nine-dash-three-two-eleven-seventh avenue. Can I get a motion?
I, I should clarify, there's two separate resolutions.
So we're selling them at three.
Yeah, well, they're two, two individual parcels, so.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do one resolution to dispose of three-two-zero-nine-seventh avenue. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to sell three-two-zero-nine-seventh avenue.
Second.
We have two seconds.
She can.
Any further discussion on this, because this was also something that came back to the table, right?
Yes, it came, we had initially, um, we're moving forward at a hundred and forty thousand. Today, we're between the two of them, seventy each. Today, we're, um, selling it for seventy-five thousand, so prices consistently the same, are similar. In fact, we're doing better now, um, it's just a different person that's interested to do it, so. The initial person, I think they, they recognized some of the challenges that they faced, and I think they wanted to be more, my, my analysis is they wanted to be more hands-off and sort of hiring out everybody to do it and just be the money guy. And, um, as you guys might notice, the, the more hands-off you are, the higher the investment amount it's going to be, and the more close you are to the work, the lower the investment amount. Some of these people put in applications that are about fifty to seventy-five dollars a square foot to fix a whole building, and when you want to build a new one, it's like three hundred dollars a square foot, and if you look at what we, we awarded, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for the last time we did it. So it's all over the board, depending on your level of engagement to the project. The initial people, I think, wanted to be sort of writing checks and working things out, but then they also didn't want to deal with the potential risk that came from not being able to control your costs by controlling the labor and that sort of thing. So they backed out because they, they cited the sprinkler system, and they were unsure of the sprinkler system, and I said, Paul, your architect either has to design it for no sprinkler system, or your architect has to, um, design it with the sprinkler system, you have to work with your architect on that, and I think they just used that as a, a clause to get out. That being said, these, these two individuals in an LLC were interested in doing that. They were working on a nine unit on Oakwood Avenue. I called Code, Code was happy with the work that they've done so far. They say they have twenty-one units in the city, and Oakwood is nine of them, so they're still working on that one. And, uh, Code did say that they just started working with them, in terms of they haven't worked a, a long time with them, and this is a, they've been very professional and honest and straightforward throughout the inspection process so far, so. Code was very pleased with the work so far. They haven't got to the finish line in Oakwood, that's what I just, that's the point I want to get across.
Okay. If there's anything else, would you take a vote?
I just want to, like, say, this has been a huge eyesore in north central for a long time, and being right across the street from Troy Central Little League, and a very active street, um, removing this light and getting people in there and activating the street, I think is going to be huge for them, and having that community garden along, right around the corner, and then those new projects on, you know, on the other side, right on Sixth. Um, it just creates that flow, um, so I am full-heartedly in support of getting this project. I mean, this has been going back from the Groff days.
Just going to throw.
Right, like, ten years ago kind of stuff, um, so this is good stuff.
Yeah. Anything else? So all in favor of disposing three, three-two-zero-nine-seventh avenue?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed? That motion passes as well. That'll bring us to our last resolution, to dispose of an A and D committee recommendation of thirty-two-eleven Seventh Avenue. Can I get a motion?
All motion.
I forget.
Uh, I need to, this is the same, this is the same contractor, so there should be no discussion. So all in favor to dispose of thirty-two-eleven Seventh Avenue?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that last motion passes, which will bring us into, um, our finance committee update, which we essentially just set our budget timeline and just discussion on budget items, correct?
Yeah, and there isn't a large discussion, cause we're still working through the rough draft of that, but I just wanted to mention and open up the dialogue to that timeline, which I believe, and Monica's the chair, is the treasurer of the finance committee. Uh, but I believe we're going to, um, make a meet before next month's meeting. So the finance will meet first while everybody's here and then it'll be a, you'll move to recommend that budget and then we're gonna adopt that budget so that I can, um, upload it to the A B O website and certify it. Our budget is due by the end of October, so that's sort of, I just wanted to mention that. So next month, we're gonna get that budget.
Okay.
So in that, in that process, we'll have, uh, the, the thought process is to have the finance meeting with the whole, uh, full board. So you all, everybody hears the presentation and then that way, if there's any questions during the regular meeting, you know, we have, you have that information already. It will be included in your board packet ahead of time, so you have time to, a vast spread to try to get that out a week ahead, at least the budget part. So you have time to digest it and look through it with the notes that are included. Um, and then also included, in addition to accepting the budget, is we also have to accept the Paris budget, which is a little bit different format. Um, and then that is what has to be submitted by the end of October to, uh, New York State. So there's actually our regular budget and then the Paris budget, which is five-year projection. Um, so, and Brad, uh, skillfully learned how to do that last year, uh, very quickly. Uh, so, um, that actually gets submitted, um, ahead of time as well, too.
Very good. Um, so we'll move on. We have no old business, so we'll move into our new business. And I'm gonna do this a little out of order, stay siding for last, so that's what we're gonna be talking about.
Yeah. So you wanna do heat pumps?
Yeah, go, go with your heat pump.
Yeah, okay. So I gotta, I gotta say, this is, this is the last sort of addendum to your back, if I pick it out. Gives you the contractors. I did write for the second floor apartment, I, I kept the same format from the month before and I didn't change it from Kales Construction to Chris and Foley Brothers, but this was a, a two-bid process since it's under twenty thousand dollars. And, uh, Chris and Foley Brothers provided one, um, quote and Dupree Heating and Cooling provided the other quote. Dupree Heating and Cooling is a local Troy M B E contractor. And so we just, you know, we got quotes for the heat pumps and those are the two contractors that quoted it. The first floor was twelve-two against, uh, fourteen-seven. And then the second floor was nineteen-five, uh, against tw- thirty-eight-two, which is an interesting, uh, jump. But I provided those quotes in people's emails and, uh, yeah, I'm open for questions.
Is the first floor less because of the office?
Yup, it's just a one, it's about a six hundred square foot, seven hundred square foot, one bedroom.
Oh, because it's behind the office.
Yup.
Yeah, and the second floor is what, twelve hundred?
Yeah.
Twelve hundred square feet, so you're twice the size.
Yup.
Yeah.
Are these, I'm just curious about the equipment there. Is there air handler or there many?
Many splits.
Their heads, the multiple heads?
So in the, in the first floor, it's gonna be one condenser and we wanted to put it on the roof out back, so that way nobody plays around with this stuff. Um, and then it, that'll just be two mini splits and then there's an electric baseboard in each of the bathrooms upstairs and downstairs. So you have an open concept living room kitchen area where the kitchen is actually gonna have a sort of a, I don't know what to call it, except for like a little bar seating. It's not, there's not a lot of room for a dining room table in that apartment, so it's just a one-bedroom with the open concept living room kitchen. So you're gonna have an air handler for the bedroom, blowing air and an air handler on the living room wall, blowing air across the front there.
It's like a one-bedroom suite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Almost a studio, except we put a bedroom wall in.
Right, and it's got a laundry.
I just call it a one-bedroom suite.
Yup.
A Marriott sells it.
Yeah, yeah. It's, you're, you're spot on. That's, that's what it looks like. It's like a Marriott suite.
It is.
And then upstairs, actually, is two bedrooms. They're like twelve by, twelve by twelve, almost, twelve by eleven, I think. And, um, and then it has a wide-open concept kitchen and, you know, we, there's currently a, an L V L beam to support the, the roof load above. And so you just have one post, it's just wide open. And you go up the stairs, it's wide open, you can see the kitchen, living room, dining room. And then there's a bathroom and a laundry and a rear egress, so.
Great flipping.
They're, they're split up, so you have two bedrooms, you need two air handlers. And then you have such a large, open space that if you put one heating system on one side, it might not hit the other side, so you need two. And then probably the, the fifth one would be at the rear egress, is what I assume that.
Yeah, there, there's five heads, uh, in the second.
For the second one.
Yeah.
Yeah. The equipment is otherwise equivalent.
Yeah.
Quality, efficiency, whatever, yeah. How often is that already here?
I, no, I didn't print, I, I usually just email out the quotes, cause there's like so many.
Did you check out the equipment?
Uh, no, I asked them what they thought would be best for it.
So let me ask you, because it's two pipes?
Hmm?
Can it heat and cool at the same time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So three pipes.
So what is the, the upstairs is a forty-eight thousand five-in-one heat pump system and for Dupree in the first floor, or, yeah, first floor is a twenty-four thousand two-in-one system, so you have a five-in-one and a two-in-one. So you have just three extra units here. And then for Chris and Foley here, they have, um,
Chris and Foley didn't give you a number for the second floor?
They did. It says Kales, but that's, I just didn't write Chris and Foley.
Oh, so that was Chris and Foley.
Yeah, that was Chris and Foley.
That's why it's thirty-eight thousand.
That might be it. They have, um, but they were close on the first floor, so.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah. So they got the outdoor unit, the heat pump stand, looking for, they have, they just have a quiet, quiet three-speed fan, quiet three-speed fan. Um, mini-split outdoor unit, quiet indoor unit. I think that they're gonna go with.
Chris and Foley also wanted to sell us a standard furnace and run ductwork, uh, in the crawl space. And it wasn't something that, uh, we wanted to entertain. We wanted to keep the split systems, uh, for simplicity, for service, et cetera. So I think they were, they were pumping that and therefore may have made the price on the split system with five heads a little bit higher in hopes that we would buy the lesser.
We say, is there a, a better way to do this?
Right.
What we can do?
Right, we have to give me more money. Well, I don't know that, you know, right, yeah, you don't know. It's just, uh, it wouldn't be surprising if I had to.
They have one, two, three, four, five indoor units and two outdoor units, whereas Dupree is gonna use five indoor units in one larger outdoor unit.
Yeah, one large outdoor unit goes on that first.
The back roof, yeah, so it's a forty-eight thousand B T U versus Chris and Foley is gonna probably do two twenty-fours. Maybe the second twenty-four unit and also that they're a larger outfit might cause them to be higher. Um, I didn't really, you know, I told them we wanted mini splits to honor the sort of idea of going electric.
Yup.
That the state is trying to do. For new construction, right? Yeah. For new, I mean, they're, they're signaling, of course, for, for rehabs, you can still do anything you want, but at the same time, we wanna, you know, honor them, they're funding it, so that's their, their goal.
Okay. Uh, we'll move in, I mean, let's just go, jump right into siding. There's no other quotes that you need to talk about.
I need you guys to approve those quotes. I can't approve those, cause they're over, over ten thousand dollars, yeah, over, yeah, over ten thousand dollars. So I need you to pick one or the other.
Okay.
Except you can't pick the second floor, cause Chris and Foley's so high. We'd have to do an R F P for that. So it's either pick it or make me.
Do you, do you want these, um, first floor and second floor?
Yeah, I'd look at separate, yeah.
So I'm gonna make, I'll make a motion to recommend, um, awarding the eight-seventy-one heat pump first floor apartment to Dupree Heating and Cooling.
Second.
You don't need to discuss it any further, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who made the motion? Like, you made the motion?
I made the motion and.
And everybody over here.
And that, yeah, this whole side, second. Um, can, can I get a motion from somebody to, on the second floor, for our case?
I motion we reward the second floor H V A C contract, uh, for heat pumps on the second floor at eight-seventy-one River Street to Dupree Heating and Cooling.
Second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Excuse me. Now we can move in, cause there is no other quotes to be discussed.
No, no, we did, we didn't get enough head-to-head quotes. We have quotes of a bunch of stuff, but, you know, depending on the number.
Yeah.
And this is relevant to the siding thing. Depending on the number that we get, if we get somebody under thirty-five thousand, we can't bring it to the board. If we can't get somebody under thirty-five thousand for something, we have to do a formal R F P process.
Okay.
And so that's relevant to the siding discussion that we're about to have. That then, you know, if we can get quotes under thirty-five thousand, we don't have to do the formal process. So there's a timeline issue there.
Okay. Um, so then, that will bring us into the siding. Um, I noticed the email, uh, chain about no vinyl, no aluminum.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So, so that was only a, uh, conversation between Paul and I and the executive committee.
Yeah.
And it, that's wise, because, I mean, I just say that because it wasn't a quorum of people discussing.
Correct.
Part of it. We were gonna discuss it in the meeting here. Um, and I should start it by saying, the initial idea for the, the building was to just fix what we have so that we don't have a, a large rehab number. And obviously, we're fixing it for less, you know, under budget right now. And so this becomes a more interesting discussion that we could have, is that we can afford to do some other things. Um, it sort of wipes away our contingency, but the goal initially, you know, when we started this five, six months ago, was to just fix the double four siding to get to a bare minimum livable standard on some things, so that way we can activate the building again instead of the building being vacant or blighted for any longer. Um, the email that went out from Brian Barker was that he'd be interested in looking at something more attractive than just double four vinyl siding. And so we provided quotes for double four vinyl siding. We do not have to, we're not forced to go double four vinyl siding. The board, if it chooses, can choose a different sort of look for the building. I would need to know what that look is exactly, but, um, you know, given the information, we can save the seventeen-five, which is our lowest quote, and entertain quotes for Hardy board siding. I sent a call out to somebody that I know and I said, what are people getting for Hardy board siding? And it was just on the phone and it's just somebody I've known a long time and he said thirteen hundred a square foot, or, yeah, thirteen hundred a square. There's four, thirty-five to forty square.
Thirteen dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for fifteen dollars a square foot, so that's about in keeping.
So that's what he's saying it is, so that's where I got my fifty thousand dollar number. Now, that's not saying I can't find somebody who's hungry and looking to get a lower number, but it at least starts a conversation that for thirty-two-five, we could upgrade the building to have a more attractive, modern look. And Brian, if you want to add anything to that?
The, the billing's really ugly. It's a, it's a real eyesore. It's a real eyesore. And if this is gonna be the home of the Land Bank, you know, and, yeah, it's, it's an important project. If we're not, it was originally gonna be torn down, like under the old regime.
I was gonna add that, Brian. I was gonna.
And I would've supported that, too, but I, I think what we're trying to do in saving it is something good.
Make it a.
And let's go all the way and make it something attractive, so it has a story.
Let me ask a question. Um, I don't disagree with you, uh, about anything you said. Would you entertain, for the sake of, uh, budget, uh, doing the Hardy board on the facade on the front and making the facade really just pop perfectly and carry out the double four plan with vinyl on the south, uh, north and, um, west elevations?
It is a corner. So that long side shows up.
I was gonna propose to do something, I was gonna propose to make it even more grand and do, uh. I think it should be Hardy around all day.
I, 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 I agree with that. I, I don't like the facade, um, it's just the facade pretty and the sides ugly.
I think you make the front, you add some type of wood grate on the bottom, horizontal, and then stack your, dress it up, man, make it look beautiful.
No, we, we haven't gone down to that. Again, it might be there.
You go over there every day, man.
Original, original. Oh, what, whatever was original, yeah, which would probably would.
I, they covered, there's, there's the asphalt.
This is the.
I was, I was gonna say, I'm sure there's asphalt, let it there somewhere.
Yeah, it keeps going.
Well, so.
We have a saying in my house, quarter mark to go first class. I think we should make this be a first-class looking building.
My take on this is, well, sure, nicer buildings are, people take care of better, they last longer, they're, you know. Old buildings are all nice, not all, but because those were the nicest. Um, and so I support that. But then I think, well, as soon as we're like, all right, past the minimum standard that we were first discussing, then you're like, all right, we're gonna spend more than minimum.
There.
And then, so then where do we spend it, you know? Do you spend it like facade? Sure.
Brad and I are just trying to play devil's advocate.
Yeah.
Give the board every option available to you. Ultimately, it's your decision at the end of the day.
Yeah, so I just, and then I'm like, well, now, I feel like we have to look at every, every place we could, you know, upgrade and, and what would be the best, and then I'm overwhelmed and I think I have no idea.
Guys, also, let's keep in mind, right?
That, that's just, you know.
This, this, this building is just one piece of the puzzle for them. It's just one piece. Like, this is the building that I told Brad was gonna come down as soon as he took over. And he kicked and screamed and he said, no, we can save it, right? So he had it in his mind, I don't know, but I'm just, this was gonna be his office. We're saving this building. Let's make this thing look beautiful, because after this is done, to the north of there, you got three or four lots. We're not gonna put vinyl siding on whatever we do there.
So I also, like, as soon as that new construction happens, it'll make our, ours look even worse if we don't do it now.
Yeah, yeah, and I would also consider, I don't know what you're doing for the windows, but.
I was thinking about windows. I was like, nicer windows, are they?
We already ordered the windows, you see it up.
Yeah. I mean, that's right.
Ship is sailed.
That's, I think, gets to the challenge of, exactly what I'm saying, like, well.
Keep in mind the lot to the north, because I have pipe dreams for that. And if, if, if we are able to pull that off, it's all, this is our, this is our headquarters for the foreseeable future, right? We all might be gone, but this could be the legacy that this board created to leave this headquarters for that neighborhood and put my pipe dream to the north of it, right? So.
And it sets a standard.
Think, think about, think about a couple of years ago. Everybody wanted the land bank abolished, done, disbanded, get rid of it. It's no good. Now Brad comes along and we're, we're gonna have a headquarters here by the end of the year. Make the damn thing look like the centerpiece of that neighborhood. And then next year, maybe the year after, we say, look, look what else we can do and we put up something beautiful next year. And it is not gonna be vinyl siding.
I think also, one of the things you have to take a look at is the big, like, go out fifty thousand feet, right, of that location. When you go up and take the bird's eye view of the location, that's also block one, right? So if we ever get to a point where that federal lock, cause block one is a federal lock, can get opened up, um, Glen Avenue becomes literally, it terminates right at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know when, when Chris and I started the Land Bank, this is one of the focus areas, because partnering up with Troy Housing Authority, we kind of created like this whole little vision of this area and how to access the lock so you can have the river views, even though there's, you know, regatta place behind it and presidents and all this other stuff. You don't have a direct view of this, of the river, but it's also one of those things that, you know, long-term vision, you know, making our stamp and securing our corner in a positive way can actually lead to some pretty good stuff down the road.
I agree.
Yeah.
Don't forget, they already saved us twenty-three grand.
I think we should, I think we should take, even if we have to go out to bid, I think you should take a look at it, get a good design, um.
Yeah, you still have an architect, right, for the building?
Yeah, the architect was for the permit sets.
Yeah.
So I don't think.
The size.
I mean, it would be great to have them to tell me that, but I don't think that, um, you're gonna get good response from people to help with that sort of thing. So the design part of it would probably have to be in-house.
Let's do it.
Well, that's great.
Or, why not a change order to the architect?
Lean on tomorrow.
We could just, well, why not a change, it's about capacity and bandwidth. So if I sent to him, hey, can you tell me what you think we should make this look like, he might not get back. He might not get back to me for three weeks, two weeks, something like that.
And then we assume we have to R F P.
Then you guys have to approve that.
Would the board entertain this? Would the board entertain if she's willing to? To allow tomorrow to, to design what this looks like. Come up with a color scheme. We, we want Hardy, right? They got what you'd like to see on the front of it.
Well, I mean, I, before we even get there, is, is like, so we're looking at options. Are there other options besides Hardy that look, I mean, there's all kinds of siding.
Hardy was brought up as just an upgrade.
It is an upgrade, right? Like, I disagree with that.
As soon as when you peel off all the layers, you're gonna find some old clavber.
So, and it would be, so it'd be consistent with the historical.
But I don't know that. I mean, it might be worth peeling off the whole layers in one spot and see what, what it has.
So I get, so, you know, in addition to essentially fifty grand, you're probably talking at least fifty five to sixty grand by the time you design it. Right? So I think we.
Well, who's designing?
If you have to hire out, right, like if we, if we wanna do this and, you know, kind of do it in a, in this other way. You know, it certainly wouldn't hurt to, you know, designers are what, hundred and seventy five, two hundred dollars an hour?
You might even be able with Hardy board, you, they, they may have, I mean, first of all. Whoever installs it has to be sort of Hardy board certified because it's not a product that just anybody can pick up. But Hardy board, James Hardy, the, the owner, you know, the company, you know, they may have. Solutions in-house that are free as a design consultant because we're buying their product. That, that's where I would start.
I would actually guess that you could go to, into Lowe's or into a Home Depot, sit at the design center.
Exactly.
A couple of different options for you. I'm guessing, so don't quote me on that.
What is it that we're designing? Are we designing the color?
Textures, you might be.
Do you want it to look like just clavbered? You want it to, right, and, and there's different types. There's the stuff that you don't ever paint. There's the stuff that you do paint. There's, there's different Hardy board product.
You could delegate authority to this to a committee too.
Maybe a student would be interested in designing it.
Yeah, we're now, we're, we're talking about time tables.
I think we start at Lowe's or fi- find whoever we can get the Hardy board from and then, like you said, Paul. See if they have a design consultant in-house and just as a courtesy, just like when you go to Best Tile, you don't pay for the design consultant because you're buying a product.
It's not a difficult building.
And there's probably not them.
Fortunately, my question is, who picks the design?
You mean the color?
Yes, and whether, what sizing and, and uh whether it's vertical.
I don't think there's that many options.
We're making this way more difficult.
Somebody, I, I think somebody can um assist, tell us colors, tell us styles.
Are you guys, are, do you guys have the bandwidth to design it?
Well, Paul, I would be willing to go to Home Depot or Lowe's with you and chime in with my girl opinion.
Any opinion is good.
And then, you know, and then we could present. And then we have like three or four different looks.
I don't think so.
Would it be safe to say that the majority, if not everybody at this table, is willing to explore a different option? AKA Hardy for the facade of this building? Would that be safe to say?
I, I do have one alternative consideration that.
Alternatives are fine, yeah.
No, not alternative to Hardy, this alternative, which is if time is an issue. Is it worth considering that we have a longer term plan to change the siding? Once we're in the building and once it's operational and so, okay, we could put vinyl on here and say, you know, in two years. I don't like wasting the resources. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not like arguing hard for that. Just as a, if, if, if time is that big an issue, that's another way to look at it, but I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm just putting it out there as another thing.
If we have the money, and we do, I think we should just do it. If we were redoing this as our own home, we would most likely go to the Hardy board or to a product that's gonna be a long term project. It's not like we're flipping this house and having somebody else do it. It's our house that we're living in. Um, it's owner occupied. So I think that, you know, there's some cool stuff we can do on the side. We certainly, I mean, with the. It's so much better than it is right now. Um, just whatever you do, don't do rent.
Like, like they did at seven ninety one. So I'll, I'll suggest this process. Because the, there, there's gotta be people in the, on the board that are most concerned about it and other ones that are maybe less concerned about what colors, textures, shapes, whatever. And so some of those people's time being considered, if there are people that wanna be part of the decision, I mean, ultimately, I think. Those sort of things fall down on, you know, me to figure out what colors, textures, shapes, but of course. You know, as a board, you can steer us to using a Hardy product and if there are anybody on the board that wants to chime in on the final designs. Like you said, we can go to Lowe's and get the picture of the building with the Hardy product and I can send an email out. And that small ad hoc committee can tell me their opinions. That's exactly what we did at eight thirty four River Street. Suzanne, I said, what colors? She gave me the colors. We painted it and everybody said, it looks great. So if.
This is, this, this is that simple.
Yes. I just need the board to want that.
Yeah, no, I completely think that you are, the two of you are completely capable of doing that work. And then if you feel like there's a couple of people that you wanna witness test that on, then reach out to those people and get some feedback. But I, you know, because I feel like we're gonna get to October and we're still not gonna have a decision.
October's in two weeks.
No, I mean, like. Like, and I think that, like, just.
But what I've heard is that Suzanne, Tamara and Brian are interested in being involved in the decision.
Completely fine.
And I can send an email out to those people. It's not a quorum, but it's also ultimately something I could execute. You know, so as long as that, everybody's fine with that, I can go ahead and.
Suzanne, you can't have another yellow ball.
I mean, I think Brian's gonna wanna go behind that building and start peeling off the side.
The back is all sheathing, the windows have been moved so many times that I would like to get down to bare wood, but at the same time.
Well, I just meant to see what the original looked like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the original, I, we've seen some of the profiles of the wood, but since the window got moved over. There's plywood next to woods, so you have to get the wood milled if you wanna replicate it. And so then you got yourself in a weird position where you could rip it all up, restore. I've done that before. It looks great when you do it.
Well, with Hardy board, don't you have to rip it down to the sheeting anyways? Everything has to come off. The clavbered has to come off. Whatever's there has to come off. That's not how I handle.
You're either gonna nail on sheathing or furring.
Yeah, as I say, you'd fur it out. Cause you got a rain spring behind it, right? Keep it dry.
Well, I think this is gonna be our headquarters and we don't want it to look like crap. And you did all that work on the cornice and we could make this a much more attractive buil- building. With our name, you know, plastered on it.
So, is that good?
Yes, I think that's the plan. That's the plan.
Michelle, do we need a vote on that or?
Any other business, Brad?
Um, there are no other votes, no other business. It's just talking about the board meeting next month in October. Because I believe there was a conflict with a couple of people on October fifteenth. And um it was suggested that maybe we move to the twenty second of October and I wanted to open up for dialogue for at least the people here.
Twenty second work for everybody?
I'm not sure, but probably.
The twenty second?
It's just the fourth Wednesday.
Brian, Andrew, Ken?
It's okay for me.
I'm okay right now until I get to my other schedule at work.
It's, everybody is in agreement. Can I get a motion to move next month's meeting to October twenty second? Why'd you put motion? Oh, that's motion, I'm sorry.
Fairly, that should have come after the next meeting, Bart.